Good evening, welcome to the June 6 meeting of the Newmarket Town Council. We begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I'd like a motion due to seal the minutes for non-public under 91A32D.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I'd like to see if the council would make a motion to accept the deeds to map R2 lot, no not accept the deeds to map R2 lot 86, sub lot 23, and not accept the deed to U3 lot 117, sub lot 26, and to accept the deeds to map U1 lot 1, sub lot 26, and authorize the town administrator to execute the documents.
Salute.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
And with that, we open public forum at 7:06.
Hi, I'm Sarah Lowe, I live on 3 Church Street. So this is my second time, well, I think we spoke to the planning board last time. This was before you came on board, Mr. Fornia. So there was talk about then, the Stone Church, it asked to turn Church Street into a one-way street headed towards the Stone Church, basically so it could have its own private driveway, or at least that's my opinion. But, the problem with Church Street, as you know, is it's quite narrow and quite steep, and so that is a hazard, I believe. I remember when the street was two-way, I heard stories at the last hearing that teenager had been killed trying to push a car up the street in a snowstorm, and the car slid back over him and he was killed. I don't know if this is really true, it might be hearsay. But I feel it's dangerous to have two-way traffic, and I also feel it's dangerous to try to go up the hill and around the corner, especially in a snowstorm. I don't think it's possible in a snowstorm. I'm not sure how the sanitation trucks would fare stopping going up the hill, and with people getting off the back, and loading trash, and recycling to the bins. So, that's my thought. And I'm not really sure what the motion is. I understand it's to make the road two-way up till, up to 5 Church Street, and then continue around the corner in a westerly direction. Is that right?
This is the first reading, there's no actions.
Okay, okay, just the first reading, so I guess I'll know after you read.
There's an actual public hearing at the next week.
Right.
So there has to, so that will be more information.
Is it one public hearing, or two?
Just one.
Just one, okay.
Well, there's two public hearings.
Two different topics.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah.
Sounds great.
Yep.
Thank you. So that's what I have to say for now.
Yeah.
I'll go into detail next time.
Any other comments during public forum?
Hi, my name is Johnson. I live at the top of the hill, at 5 Church Street. I'm just here to get some information about what the plan is, because I do have concern that I could lose the sidewalk that's in front of my house, and that would bring the street right up to my window, and I just don't want to see that happen, and I don't see how making it a two-way street would make it any safer. There's a sidewalk there, and a lot of plants hanging over, and if those plants, I think, were just kept trimmed, there wouldn't be a pedestrian problem in the street, and people could use the sidewalk, but they hang over heavily. But, that's it.
Okay.
Just wanted some information.
All right.
I mean, God's the sidewalk.
You gotta come up to the mic where it can...
Okay. I mean, God's the sidewalk issue, I'd like to mention that I've been there 12 years, and the sidewalk has been plowed twice in 12 years. And that may be because of the shrubs, as you said. And then it turns into stairs, so I don't know how that would be maintained. It looks like it's pretty rundown, although I know people that use it. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we will close public forum at 7:10 PM. And next is to consider the May 16 meeting minutes. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Right.
You can't discuss until there's a motion, a second.
Okay. Go ahead, then.
I just, I had a question, I wasn't at the meeting, but I read the minutes, and I just had a question on line 260. Patricia? Did, are we missing the roll and result of the voting on that resolution? Yeah, line, yeah, line 260. So the, there was a motion to approve on 246 that was seconded, and then there was discussion according to the minutes, but I don't see...
What do you mean?
I think it would, it's missing where, at 260.
Yeah, because it was approved.
Right.
Yeah, I watched the video, it is, it was 6-0.
It's a good catch, because it's important to be in the...
Yeah, on line 260 doesn't have the vote.
260.
Line 260.
Is where it would be.
It would be there. Resolution 2017-18-46, the vote's not there.
I'm sorry, I could've said that more clearly. Thanks.
Any other corrections or comments on the public meeting minutes? So with that correction counted for, please call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Abstain.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0 to 1, I mean 4-0 to 1.
Okay, and could I have a motion to approve the May 16 non-public meetings?
So moved. Sorry. Sorry. So moved?
Oh, second.
And any, any comments?
You can't make comments.
Oh, that's right, in public, but, well, you can ask if there are comments.
Right, and then we have to go to non-public.
But, are there any comments?
No.
Okay. Then seeing no comments, please call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein. Thanks, Counsel Cast. I forgot the wrong one.
Abstain.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0 to 1.
Okay. Report of the town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on my, in my report, as many councils are aware, many of the streets in downtown Hill area are one-way streets. We had a request from one business to switch the directions of the one-way street flow from Church Street. In addition, when the department heads and I were walking downtown to find, we usually do this on a quarterly basis, we do a walk and see if there's issues in downtown, we had a chance to look at Center Street. If you didn't notice, the "Do Not Enter" sign for Center Street's probably about, what?
Central.
Central, sorry.
Yeah.
Central Street is about quarter of the way out, and it's not possible to bring it down further, to put the "Do Not Enter" sign, because there's no signs, you don't have to put on a building. So, we sent both items to the Highway Safety Committee for review, and the Highway Safety Committee is made up of myself, the police chief, public works director, town planner, a member of the general public, the building inspector who is recused from this one due to his conflict of interest with the Church Street situation, as well as Counsel Bowden. We met a few weeks ago and reviewed the situation, and both, the committee recommended that both requests be granted unanimously and sent to the town council. On the agenda this evening for first reading are the two ordinance allowance for these changes, they do require public hearings at the next meeting, so at the next meeting we'll have two public hearings on these items. The next item on my report is that, just so everyone knows, the Bay Road Municipal Parking Lot was reconstructed, and I think it came out really, came out great. It'll provide additional 21 spaces for the downtown area, and we are selling permits for the lot, as we do other municipal lots. Individuals with permits will be allowed to park overnight from 1:00 AM to 5:00 AM. Those without permits, parking lot during those hours will be towed. The public can use any spaces between the hours of 5:00 AM and 1:00 AM. So it's basically, if you get a permit, you're allowed to, you're away from this snow parking ban, so you're allowed to attend, maybe park there at that time. The next item, as was brief, discussed briefly at the last meeting, the Newmarket School District has formally requested that the Chief of Police place a school resource officer in the elementary school. As part of this request, they will provide the town with $88,000 to fund the salary and benefits for that officer. On the agenda for first reading is a resolution accepting the unanticipated revenue from the school district for $88,000 for hiring the officer. Just, I want to clarify the process in this one, because the council's not approving the placement of the officer, they're approving the acceptance of the funds. RSaf 105:2-A, it's the Chief of Police has the authority to direct and control all employees of his or her department in their normal course of duty, and that the responsibility of the chief administrative officer to oversee the chief of police, so it falls on me in that position. However, as I said, the council has, we have to go to the council to accept unanticipated revenues of $88,000, and the council may, after a public hearing, can vote yea or nay to accept those unanticipated revenues. So pursuant to 3995B, you'll have a public hearing on the agenda for the next meeting to accept unanticipated revenues for that purpose. The next item is, I'm pleased to announce, to inform the town council that I've been accepted as a member of the class of 2019 for Leadership New Hampshire. Leadership New Hampshire is a program that increases civic engagement and strengthens communities through connecting and educating a diverse pool of engaged or emerging leaders about the state of New Hampshire. Each year, 28 to 38 emerging and established leaders from across the state are selected for comprehensive study of communities, issues, challenges of the state, and introduce them to, and interact with policymakers, nonprofit organizations, business leaders, and citizens from homeowners to prison inmates, all for the purpose of building a community of informed engaged leaders. And I'd want to take this opportunity to thank the council for their support in my application process to be accepted to that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes.
And the final item is going to be postponed because the Director of Environmental Services has become ill and is unable to attend this evening, so we're going to probably schedule that for our July meeting, so we don't have too much, too packed of agenda at the next meeting. So that's off tonight, Mr. Chair.
I did have a question.
Sure.
I just wanted to know if the Newmarket Business Association was aware of the Bay Road?
We've notified them, and, yep.
Okay.
We've been putting it in the newsletter, and I think it was on the front page of the website as well, I'll have to double check.
Okay.
Sort of along those lines, is there a way to gently ask the NBA what their plan is, whoever the responsible party, what, I mean, could they tell us when they plan to get back to us?
Yeah, I will...
Have they lost interest? Because this has been two, three months.
Yeah, easily, yeah, it was winter when I met with them.
Right, so, I mean, they don't have to do anything, but it would seem like a response would be appropriate at this point.
I will find out.
Thank you. Any committee reports?
I have a question.
Please, go ahead.
So, the Budget Committee met on the 21st of May. Just a couple of things, we will not be meeting June or July due to a general lack of business. It has been generally accepted in past precedent that nothing happens budget-wise until fall, so we'll be taking the summer off. We will reconvene on August 27th, same time, 7:00 PM, down in the auditorium. We selected a CIP representative as well, that was Mr. Trevor McDonald. And then we had the superintendent come, she spoke about the construction that was going on, minor changes that are happening in the area, spoke about the parking lot and the staging area for the construction vehicles, as that will go on. Kind of minor, not necessarily of concern to us, but I just wanted to bring it up. They're looking at installing some new flashing 20 mile an hour signs in the area. They said that they're going to be putting some solar cells on top to cut down on electrical usage, and for all three of them, about $15,000 to $20,000, but the hope is that would help make drivers aware as they're coming into town by that area, just to keep an eye out for schoolchildren as they're trying to cross the road, parents, et cetera. So, very minor, doesn't really affect us, but I thought I'd mention it, and that's all.
Any other committee reports? All right, then. Whereas water...
You've already read it, so you only have to do, accept the motion to approve.
All right, well, could I have a motion to approve? This is about the increase in water rates.
So moved.
Second.
Any comment?
Just a quick, I'll try to answer as much as I can, the Environmental Service Director's not here. This is our annually review of the rates, we're still going to be some of the lowest in the region for water rates compared to our counterpart in Portsmouth, Dover, Exeter, Durham, Somersworth, I believe Rochester as well. But this covers the cost of our maintenance, and that we've already done, and we have to pay off the bonds, as well as putting money into capital reserve funds for future maintenance. As I said, you would've gotten the presentation on the future maintenance tonight, but the Environmental Service Director became ill, but you do have the presentation in front of you of the number of things that needs to get done. We're still, have pipes out there from the late 1800s, and those are the ones that tend to break in the middle of the winter, so we're trying to replace those as much as possible, as well as begin the development of the fourth Tucker, the fourth well, which is the Tucker well.
Counsel Cast.
I don't know if you'll be able to answer this, Steve. I was curious, just looking at the way the rate increases to offset, I mean, in this context, maintenance and build-out, right? But I'm going to guess, at least in the next 10 to 20, you know, within that 10 to 20-year time span, people will probably become more and more actively reducing their water consumption?
That is a problem that we're running into.
Yeah.
One of the things that we've known, it's...
Which is good.
It's a good problem to have.
Yeah.
We've noticed, the number of years, a few years ago when we had the droughts, that the amount of water usage has actually dropped, not only because of the conservation efforts because of the drought, but also because of low-flow toilets, low-flow showerheads, different items like that, more people drinking bottled water, those kind of items. So you, yes, we are seeing, so, but, when people use less water, we have less revenues, but we still have the same amount of equipment that we need to maintain to get the water out, that when the people do use it, so yes. I don't see any huge impacts of it right now, but, I mean, if any situation when you have less demand, then this, we have to find ways to make up the funds somewhere else, and it would be through additional rates.
Okay.
Counsel Long? Do you think that some of those future costs could potentially be offset by new home buildings or private wells coming online to town systems?
Well, private, private wells don't impact the water system.
I guess what I'm saying is if people were to switch over, for example, you had mentioned Moody Point potentially, so do you think that that could just be a way of building in those future costs by, if we see more development?
If you see more development, they have, they traditionally pay impact fees to pay off future development, however, it does not, it does not improve the current system.
Okay.
So we have to still improve the system that's already out there. Yes, it'll help with the rates, because any times you have more people paying for the rates, it should stabilize it.
Yep.
But we just don't, it's, we're not at the point yet that the, the lack of usage is hurting the rates yet.
It's mainly a function of antiquated pipes.
Exactly.
Is what's driving, is, now, the, just for background for anybody, correct me if I'm saying this wrong, but we knew the, on the sewer side, we saw increases coming because of the upgrades to the sewer plant. So they, they had a stepped increase on the sewer side every year, so that there wouldn't be one big jump in the rates at some future point, they stepped it up. This is not part of a similar process with the water.
No, it's an annual review.
Just an annual, and okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
And could I have a motion to approve Resolution 2017-18-48, purchase of three Motorola radios, police fire and backup with six-by-eight structure?
So moved.
Second.
Chief Tru to answer any questions.
Otherwise we get out of here.
Now... So, this is a CIP project that has been, money's been put aside in the CIP for as far back as I can remember, was 2006. So we're going to be replacing three radios, our police primary radio, our fire primary radio, and a backup radio in case there's a catastrophic event on the hill that we put our radios on. Right now, due to a mistake by Motorola and Rockingham County, we have the potential to benefit at a 50% discount if we purchase before July 31st. In the packet, I failed to show you, I made copies tonight to show you, so I wanted you to have a visual of what I'm talking about, if I may. So what you'll see is, you'll see, you'll see two tin cans in there, right now. Inside these tin cans, on the left, is a repeater from the town of Durham. So it's kind of a gentleman's contract with Durham, that we have housed their repeater here for years, we do mutual aid with Durham. On the right-hand side, that, that can holds the police primary, the fire primary, as well as battery backups, as well as a antiquated fan that just cannot keep these radios cool. You'll notice this tent that we put up here, this kind of a party tent we've had to put up over it. When we brought in the three-phase power a few years ago, Eversource clear-cut the area, we used to have trees to protect those cans and provide some shade. We no longer have that shade, so we've had to resort to putting up this tent over our radios. Those metal cans will literally get 100, 110, 115 degrees inside there in July. We've already had two failures this year, where we've had to go and put this tent up and put a fan in there to try to cool it off. So my recommendation is that, to protect the town's interest and for security purposes, is to put these radios in a six-by-eight shed. I don't know if you're familiar with a Reed's Ferry shed, it's a small six-by-eight basic structure. With the, with the shed, it will be, it will have an air conditioner and a heater in it, so it will provide heat in the winter months, should two-way communication need to go up there and do any work inside, and will also provide air conditioning in the summer months when it gets extremely hot, unbearably hot. The cost to do the site work, I've discussed it with Director Malaski and Sean Gregg, and the cost can be absorbed through the operating budget, the site work, to pour a pad and put conduits in. The breakdown is 10,000, the total is 19,000 and change, I think it's 19,390, with the breakdown, with the breakdown being 8,500 for the Reed's Ferry shed, and 10,890 for the three radios. Right now, we have 182,000 in capital reserve for dispatch, and I'm seeking your approval, I'm here to answer any questions.
Yes, give up my ask, so would you be, assuming the shed's going to go in the same spot where we're currently looking right now?
Yep.
Would you be taking the radios out of the tin cans, or just building around that essentially?
Those tin cans are going to go.
Okay.
That's a great question, the tin cans are going to go, the, the shed is going to have a, it's going to have shelving in it, that's going to be crafted by two-way communication, so it's, it'll be set up...
So it's shelter and all-new housing for equipment?
Shelter, yes, yep.
Okay.
With a new lock on it, and, for security purposes.
Do you mind if I ask another question? Cool. What is the lifetime on these radios typically? I know we're getting a great deal, I'm just curious to know, are these...
Well, I can tell you that, and I put it in my staff report, it's going to be unsupported in 2019, meaning if a part breaks, Motorola will not replace the part.
Okay.
They're not going to make the part. In fact, last month, we just had to replace a part on our backup consulate, and it cost us, I think, $75 to replace that part. We will not have that luxury come 2019.
All right.
So have we replaced, will this be the final replacement of the radios at 50%? It seems like we've got quite a deal on all our radios.
We have, but between the police department and the fire department, we've, we've got our money's worth out of Motorola, finally.
Yeah, but have we replaced virtually, all, brought all of ours up to...
Radios, other than portable radios, yes.
Great.
I mean, we're in good shape. Now, there are some other items, antennas, that, you know, obviously are going to need CIP attention next year, and there's also hardware that's going to need attention in the next couple of years, so.
Okay.
I said, two quick questions.
Sure.
The sheds are wood, right? It's wood with a vinyl siding. Okay. And any concerns or considerations for rodents? Because I've had issues with them, burrow again. That's a good question, and I don't have the answer. I do know that we haven't had rodents to get into these cans. Okay. And I would, I would assume that... With vinyl, right, you said? Yeah, with vinyl. If we do, I guess we'll have to address it, I don't have an answer for you. Okay. I'll put it on two-way communication if there, if we get rodents. Yeah. We are, we do have a contract with two-way communication, where they, they maintain all of our... Okay. ...hardware and software, so. So they have a look at it, anything that might be... We're up there frequently. Okay. To, just to check it out and make sure everything's running, and it's hooked up to a, there's a, you can't see it, but there's a portable generator off to the side. Okay. That is propane-fired, so in case we, if there's a major accident on Route 108 near Wright's Corner, that is where our power comes in from. So if there's a major accident where a telephone pole gets taken out, our generator will kick on. So, we've actually used it in the past, and it's been very helpful.
If no further questions, please call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we're, next is a nomination, I want to make sure this is, this is a nomination for appointment of Michael LaBranch to the NCDC, and is, is it correct that, is, does this expire December 31 this year?
Yes.
So it's just a very short term?
Yep.
Okay. Well, he's certainly more than qualified. Could I have a motion to accept his, this application for appointment?
So moved.
Second.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right. And now we will be reading resolutions and ordinances for first reading. Resolution 2017-18-49, authorizing the town administrator to enter into an agreement for Tiger House repairs and painting. It has been, whereas it has been determined that the Tiger House is in need of exterior repairs and painting, and whereas the Director of Facilities created a request for proposal submission, with two proposals being received for repairs and painting based on our request, and whereas the Tiger House is in need of rot repairs, window replacement, door replacement, and painting to protect the facility, and whereas the town administrator recommends that the town enter into a contract with educational building consultants to address the repairs and painting of the Tiger House, and now therefore be it resolved by the New Market Town Council that the town council authorized this town administrator to enter into an agreement with educational building consultant to provide repairs and painting services as detailed in our request for proposal dated March 5, 2018, for a cost of $18,800, project funding derived from the Buildings and Grounds Repairs and Replacing Fund within fiscal year 2018-19 approved budget. Next. Next is Resolution 2017-18-50, authorizing the town administrator entering, to enter into an agreement with LePole Excavators to make police department parking lot drainage and paving repairs. Whereas it has been determined that our police department has flooding issues and failing pavement which impacts safety and asset protection, and whereas the Director of Facilities requested proposals from contractors through a request for proposal, R F P process, and whereas the police station parking lot is in need of drainage and pavement repairs, and whereas the town administrator recommends that the town enters into an agreement with LePole Excavators LLC of North Hampton, New Hampshire, to conduct services as detailed in our request for proposal dated April 26, 2018, with additional services, and now therefore be it resolved by the New Market Town Council that the town council authorizes the town administrator to enter into an agreement with LePole Excavators LLC of North Hampton, New Hampshire, construction services as detailed in our request for proposal, police department parking lot drainage repairs dated April 26, 2018, in the amount of $28,683 utilizing Building and Ground Capital Building Reserve Fund 2018-19 approved budget. New Market Elementary School Resource Officer. Whereas the New Market School District has requested a school resource officer for the New Market Elementary School from the New Market Police Department, and whereas the New Market School District has agreed to fund such position, not to exceed $88,000, and whereas RSA 3195B requires the town council to accept unanticipated revenue after a public hearing. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the New Market Town Council that the council does hereby accept the $88,000 for the sole purpose of a school resource officer. And for the next two ordinances, I'd like to ask the council if there is an objection to re, reading these ordinances by title only as their lengthy. If I see no objections, so the first is Ordinance Number 04-2017-2018, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of the Town of New Market, New Hampshire, making Central Street traffic two-way. And the next one is Ordinance Number 5, 2017-18, and that is an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Town of New Market, New Hampshire, making Church Street traffic one-way westerly. And so is there a correspondence to the town council?
There is none.
And are there closing comments by town councillors? Seeing none. The next council meeting is June 20th, and seeing no other business, the meeting stands adjourned.